United States of America. We are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, and the ensemble of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, here are my prayer. I honor and praise you. We thank you for all the blessings that we take for granted every day. Forgive us of our sins and inequalities. Today we come to you to ask for your blessing of this meeting. Guide and direct our board and our leaders to make the best decisions for our country and our citizens. Grant us strength and wisdom in all that we do. Help us to love and forgive one another. Pour your protection over all those who preserve our freedoms and for all of those who keep us safe. Thank you for what you've done, what you're doing, and what you're going to do in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Public announcement. Do you not have any written public announcements? So do you have anybody from the public? Not seeing anybody from the public, we will move on to the next one. IFB RFP bid award. Canisa?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners? We solicited IFB twenty-three oh two for annual construction materials and services on February twenty-eighth. And we did open seal bids on March twenty-third. We did receive fifteen bids and all were deemed responsive. And we are choosing, well, staff is recommending that we do award to all vendors that put in on this bid. As we could use them as is best for the county. With that being said, we must have the other questions.
Okay. Question, question, question. What do we, how do we define best for the county? What's going to be that definition?
Sir, this is a, this is the same annual maintenance and construction services that we awarded a bid last time. We did revise it a little, let her meet our needs, added a few items, eliminated a few items that we haven't used in the last three weeks. So the way that we're going to do this is the same way that we did before, is as staff and as we develop the scope of work, that we need to go out and do maintenance, do some construction, the county and myself will develop the scope of the line items that we need. And with our bid item, we will go over and pull their unit prices. And then we will put that together and add it up down at the bottom and whoever the lowest price will be requesting the service.
And so we are going to do that schedule?
Yes.
Or put that together?
Yeah, and that's how we do it right now. I mean, even with the rock and the base course, anything that we order, we go through there and figure out who's the overall lowest price, including with delivery, including any freight that we have or the units that we need. And we always, and that's my direction to the staff, is lowest price goes with it unless they are not able to deliver what we're asking when we're asking. And that's wrote in there as well. But we go lowest price and then availability and work from there.
Okay. And what size project are we going to use this on? Up to, up to, I want to know what's the upper limit?
It, it really kind of depends on what we're doing with it. We've gone, we've gone more than a million before on these. Just because we've been able to do that stretch of road with it. I mean, if we have a simple scope and we can stretch it out as far as we can, you know, we'll, we'll take it as far as it needs to go. One item that we did add this year that will probably push some of our overall prices higher is we added structural concrete to it. And with some of these low water crossings that we're looking at doing, we're finishing up the West Loop, but we have others that are coming. Dark Canyon, Haroon, uh, Hollerman up around Artesia that could possibly push us up in the past the million dollar mark. But really, we, we keep most of our projects around the five, six hundred thousand dollar range. If we get anything higher than a million, million and a half, we're probably going to look at bidding it if we have the bid documents and the design.
Okay. All right. How does that fit with, with the pyramid code?
It's not a problem as long as we've got this contract in place. I mean, we can actually do.
So there is no, there's no limit or, or scope of work that we have to?
Is there any limits or scope?
No, as long as the IFB is in place and we use that as our contract.
Okay. Okay, and we're, and we're looking at segmentations or line treated base in those areas where we have something separated, right?
Right, yeah, we, we have all those in place in this bid.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve these?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Southeast Loop, Phase Three.
We solicited IFB twenty-three oh three for the Southeast Loop Phase Three A on March second. We did have a pretty quick turnaround with this one and we opened all the bids on March twenty-second. The county did receive two bids, one from Constructors, Constructors and ones from J and H Services. The lower, the lowest overall responsive bid was submitted by Constructors. Both were responsive, but this was the lower all overall one. So staff is recommending award go to Constructors Inc. With that being said, we'll stand for any questions.
Questions, questions, questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Summit?
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, moving on to the trailing of agenda. We have the commission meeting minutes from March the twenty-first of twenty-twenty-three. Do we have any questions or, or any amendments that we need to address? Okay, no questions or amendments. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, we have your treasures report in your packet. Do we have any questions or anything to discuss on the treasures report? Questions? Amendments? Okay, moving on. That was for information only. February, the two thousand twenty-three revenue report, Roberta Gonzalez.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So for the February twenty-twenty-three revenue reports for gross receipts tax, the county collected almost four point nine million for the month of February, which puts us at about a little over thirty-six million dollars collected for the fiscal year. For oil and gas for the month of February, the county collected seven point eight million dollars. Uh, this was November's business month, so oil's prices was about eighty dollars. Price per barrel were still averaging production about twenty-one, roughly twenty-one point one million dollar, or twenty-one million barrels per month. Um, at this month, gas was still a little bit above average, about four point five, uh, four dollars and fifty cents. Since then, it's come down. I think this morning it was like two dollars and ten cents. And as far as, um, oil prices go as well, too, March, we were averaging about seventy-two dollars compared to February. We were about eighty. However, production is still right hanging at that twenty-one point one, twenty-one point two million barrels. Um, so I do anticipate this number to still go down just slightly, uh, but to hold pretty steady between seven and seven point five for the remaining of the fiscal year.
Okay, so it's going to be about, it's close to eight million. So we got one, two, three, four. So another thirty-two million or so?
Yeah, I would say about thirty, between thirty and thirty-five.
And what is the price of the I?
Um, it was at eighty, eighty.
At what?
I had it at eighty-one.
Eighty-one, okay. Okay, any questions? Questions, questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a second.
Have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, budget versus, budget versus actual February revenues and expenses, Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, as you know, uh, on the revenue side countywide, we're way over collected at a hundred and twenty-four percent. Uh, without transfers, we're even more. We're about a hundred and forty-six percent collected. Uh, for expenses, um, it's showing us at about sixty-five percent expense. Of course, that's with transfers. When you take out transfers, it's a lot less than that. We're about forty-six percent expensed for the county. So doing pretty good. On the general fund side, um, obviously, we're over a hundred and fifty per percent collected. That's due to oil, gas, GRT, our property tax. And for expenses, um, for February, we should be roughly at about sixty-seven percent. Uh, most departments are well under that. There's only a few, um, same explanation as the months before, the few departments that are over. They have bigger one-time expense for the fiscal year, really, is what most of them come down to. General fund still is showing at about eighty-two percent expensed. However, majority of those transfers sit in general fund. So general fund without it, uh, transfers, we're sitting more at about fifty-two percent expensed. So well under the sixty-seven percent for the fiscal year.
Correct. Okay, questions? Motion? Have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, local assistance and tribal consistency fund approval, Roberta Gonzalez.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we had brought this to you a while back when we were submitting for this funding. We had asked for approval of signature at the time Commissioner McCutcheon, made that submission. We did receive our first tranche of the local assistance funding. We re, we brought, um, the similar thing with the American Rescue Plan Act Fund as well, too. We're just basically bringing you a summary, um, of what the county intends on doing with some of this money. Uh, so the local assistance tribal consistency fund, it was essentially a branch under the state fiscal recovery fund, the coronavirus. Uh, we had the American Rescue Plan Act and now we have the LACT funds. Um, they're similar in the fact that they're federal funds, but they're different. These funds right here, they're a lot more lenient. We can basically use them on any general services that we would normally provide. The only thing we cannot use them for is lobbying, uh, whereas the American Rescue Plan Act had a lot more restrictions on it. The other thing is these local assistance funds, we don't have to procure federally, um, whereas the American Rescue Plan Acts, we do have to procure federally. So they are similar in the fact, um, the other good thing about the LACT funds is that there is essentially no end date to use the money. Once we receive our first and second tranche, we're not on a timeframe to spend that money, whereas the American Rescue Plan Act, we are. We have to have everything encumbered by twenty-twenty-four and spent by twenty-twenty-six. So this is essentially, um, an agenda request coming to you, letting you know this is, and I'll go down to the summary. Letting you know we received half, um, of the seven point five million dollars so far, so we have three point seven million. And this would be, um, what we plan on, um, using at least half of this for. This is just a summary. And basically, we're coming to ask you, this is a summary. We can deviate from this as long as we're not spending over the seven point five million. But as you can see, the majority of the stuff that we would want to use this on is upgrading, um, a lot of the HVAC systems in and around the county.
Okay. Any questions?
You said we can, you know, we can adjust this funding.
Yes, absolutely. This is just kind of like a roadmap, a guideline as to, um, half of the money, what we're going to be using it for.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Boe? Commissioner Beard? Okay, done. So do I have a motion to, to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Lee Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, annual assessor's report to the commission for information only.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. We don't get to this table very often.
So the assessor is required by the New Mexico State statute to provide an annual, uh, report to the Board of Commissioners. I believe you guys all have a copy of that in front of you and the assessor's property valuation plan, I believe you have in front of you. We still have some positions open, open in the office. We have several appraisers that have and will be taking I double A courses. Our appraisers continue to work hard on the reappraisal process. In twenty-twenty-two, we saw an eighty-four percent increase in our reappraisal. We will soon be receiving our twenty-twenty-three pictometry flyover images. We have a new vehicle encumbered since July of twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, and it is still in production. The assessor's office has been on the Tyler software for six years. We continue to clean up data from the conversion. Our twenty-twenty-three notice of values were mailed on Friday, March thirty-first. May first will be the deadline to protest, protest the values. The county had an overall growth of over nine hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. The largest gain was eight hundred and forty-seven million in state assessed property. The second largest gain was, uh, over, a little over fifty-one million in residential improvements. We had a loss in livestock of one point four million and thirty thousand in agriculture land. Net new is used to describe the net value on any new building, additional improvement. In twenty-twenty-two, we had a little over twenty million in net new valuation on residential property and a little over eight million in net new valuation on non-residential property. Task reports that Eddy County had seven hundred and forty-five new will, new wells drilled in twenty-twenty-two. And then on the next page, it will show how many, uh, how many deeds, subdivisions, boundary surveys, and permits our office worked in twenty-twenty-two. We had a significant, uh, number of those done. And then we have, uh, on the other pages are the staff in our department. And then we have a reappraisal plan on the, on the last page. The, uh, the report, the next report is on the assessor's calendar. That tells us what, that tells you what our office does each month throughout the year. And then, um, in, uh, the next couple of months, we will report back to you on the assessor valuation. They will come in in April and do an, uh, an evaluation, then I'll come back to you guys and let you know what was, what was said on that. So we appreciate your support and have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, approval to reallocate a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars of funds to purchase items out of the, uh, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three fiscal budget for the ECDC, which is the detention center. Uh, what, uh, the warden?
Morning, Chair and Commissioners. What we have here, we had a little extra funds left over from our install of our camera operations, which ended right around, uh, completed right around November. So we have these funds here that we had allocated, so it's not new funds, it's just, uh, funds that were already earmarked for that. We like to take those additional funds and put them into these, uh, listed items that we've, uh, provided for everyone. I can go through that lineup list if you need me to.
Okay, any questions? Questions? Motion? Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Have a motion and second, call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman of Fire Prevention Trailer, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, budget, Josh Mack.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So today we're coming before you asking for your approval to move forward with procuring our fire prevention trailer for next fiscal year. We were able to get capital LA money thanks to Jason Burns and his assistance of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Chevron gave us a sixty-five thousand dollar donation earlier this fiscal year and they are going to give us another sixty-five thousand towards this project, so Beverly's here. We want to thank Chevron for that. And then the remaining amount, um, not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars would come out of fire excise to cover the difference. To procure it, we'll have to procure it initially through PO with fire excise monies. Once the legislative funds and everything comes in, then Roberta and I will work to make that adjustment to the PO and then complete the purchase. We're looking about a six-month build time. It's a very interactive trailer, simulates all different kinds of fires. It can be used for residential. It can also be utilized by, companies for workforce-related training, things like that. So it'll give us a good dynamic trailer that we can use within the community to promote fire prevention.
Okay. Questions? Questions?
Help me understand the trailer some more. I mean, I heard what you said, but what does that mean?
It's just so we can, it's mobile, so we can take it to the schools, we can take it to the fair.
And what does it do? Like you can open it up, you go in it?
Yeah, see, you go in, it's an enclosed trailer. It's almost, the best thing I could describe it is almost like a camper. It's got like a simulated kitchen area, trash can, simulates tornadoes, hurricanes, um, a bunch of different things. It actually moves the electrical outlet spark. There's a fire extinguisher that they can aim at the fire and they actually have to push the button and then it suppresses the, it puts the fire out. So just simulation essentially for people to be able to be in a condition that they wouldn't normally be in, but also be safe practicing it, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Boe? Commissioner Beard?
Good.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, approval for the, uh, Board of Commissioners Chairman to sign the ECFR Annual State Fire Fund Application and Volunteer Firefighters B R A forms, Joshua Mack.
So every year we're required to submit the volunteer firefighter pair of forms, which Mr. Chairman already signed, so this is after the fact. So y'all are aware that he signed those. Um, we had nineteen that we submitted this year that were eligible as active. Uh, and then as far as the state fire fund application, it's usually signed by the county manager or the chairman of the commission. So it's an electric e-signature. It's just something we have to do annually to be able to receive our state fire funds.
I mean, it's in my best interest if we have a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number ten, begin hiring process for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, budget, Joshua Mack.
Saw in this one, uh, we proposed the twenty new positions, which is my understanding that it's going to be approved through the budget when the budget's approved, so. We've had the over hire positions that opened up, um, the Friday after we approved that and they posted it, they closed the captain and battalion chief. We did get a battalion chief. We also have a captain applicant. Then I have twelve firefighter applicants on top of it that we've already tested, eight of them. We've got four more left to go. Um, instead of lose them in the process, we would like to be able to begin the hiring process to get those people processed through, um, start their physicals, everything like that, to be able to actually start them as soon as possible for the next fiscal year, so we're not dragging until later in the year, so.
Just to be clear, this is next?
Next fiscal year, yes, sir, is when they would start. This year, we would just interview, put them through the testing and start the physical process, which y'all approved the million dollars for the health and wellness for the physicals. So there's no adjustment needed this fiscal year, no expense.
Questions? Questions? Questions, Commissioner?
What would, what would that make the, the total, uh, on staff number?
That would take us to forty-one on, on the line. So then we ask for the three lieutenant positions to be able to over hire as lieutenants initially because we'd have to put all of them through academy. And then when we approach the end of that academy, we would do our over hire process from internal.
Commissioner Beard? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, resolution agreement consent agenda. Do we have any items that we want to pull to look at separately? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a sec, motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eligité officials and department updates.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just wanted to give you a brief update on, uh, one of our projects and some of our nu, the numbers we have for the. See if we can get this. Um, we recently during one of our wind events, we lost the, the roof at the Otis Community Center. Essentially blowed off the majority of the roof, so, uh, our vendor was able to, to get in there and provide some temporary, so we wouldn't sustain damage, uh, inside the building. This is the completed roof. Facilities has also, uh, the facilities department internally, we have, uh, we brought the heating and cooling back online, uh, made repairs and things. We also had, uh, we went ahead and painted the entire inside of the facility. Our custodial staff, uh, went in and stripped and, and waxed the floor. On the left picture there, you can kind of see it before and after, uh, of them stripping and then, uh, uh, after they got done. So it's really attractive out there. It looks nice. We've, we've pretty much completed everything in the community center. So it's, it's looking really sharp.
Terrific. Do we have insurance that covered, uh, damage to the roof?
I, I'm not aware of any, sir. It, the roof was probably ten years past its life expectancy. It was, it was, it was an EPDM roof, which is a rubber roof, um, essentially the old black rubber. It's not mechanically fastened, so when it became unadhered, a little bit of wind got under it and just. The new roofing system, of course, is fully adhered and mechanically fastened, so we don't run into those kinds of things moving forward.
About what's the life expect, expectancy?
About twenty-five years. And then we add the smart care on top of that, which usually extends that five to ten years, where they come and maintain it. Look for any leaks, they fix leaks, and that's all included in our smart care that we currently have with the vendor.
And this is the same kind of roof that you just put on the detention center, correct?
It is. This, this is the same roof, same roofing systems that we've done at detention, here at administration. Uh, currently, the substation in Artesia is being done. Uh, they start, they started it yesterday, but with the, the wind getting up, they probably won't get back to it till later in the week. We're using this roof system throughout the county, uh, due to the availability of, of TPO. So in the, or the lack of, of availability of TPO right now, so. Let's move on. And then we have, uh, it's our work order update. You can see again, our, our March work orders completed. Those are reactive, um, responses. So something breaks, something goes down. It's, uh, come down substantially, which that's our goal, is thirty-one. Last year, work orders, uh, in twenty-two, reactive work orders were at sixty-eight. And then March preventive maintenance work orders completed were one eighteen. So a substantial increase in preventive maintenance, which, as you know, the more preventive maintenance we can get done, those reactive numbers will just continue to fall.
How do we turn, determine, uh, the preventative maintenance schedule? How do we turn, determine the preventative maintenance schedule?
We have, it's, it's determined internally. So I, I set a goal or a standard, and, and then we also use some programming that tells us, based on our electrical consumption, our water usage and our gas usage, we get a, we get a trend of how many hours we should be spending in that facility or on that particular device. And then that's where I base when and how and, and what, how we're going to get that done and make sure we're maintaining it based on that information.
Have we done a vis- a visual inspection of, of all the facilities to evaluate?
Yeah.
Or how do we do that? Just overall usage or something?
You bet. So, Mr. Chairman, the, we just completed a facility assessment. We have received the first five buildings. The remaining seventeen buildings, we're expecting any day. I did an essential walkthrough just to assess where we were at and what we're, and met with directors and things looking for the needs, immediate needs. The facility assessment goes a little deeper, looks further out. We will have that information and copies available for all of you to review and, and look at. And it really gives a quality picture of where we're at with our facilities, which we have some that are in need, that have substantial needs.
Any questions?
When do you anticipate that report, that report will be out to us?
I, I could send it out this afternoon on the first five. We, we tried to concentrate it on the first five major buildings. And if we have it in hand, I could send that out this afternoon. And then soon as, we, as I stated, we anticipate the, the other seventeen buildings any day. So when those come in, and then we'll have a full assessment of every building. And then we use that assessment to, as to how we proceed with our preventive maintenance, what we need to address for our priorities and things like that, capital issues.
I've got a question on the, and I don't know if it's on, one of my questions is, is it our building, but the four H, is it the annexed building or whatever it is? Is that our building?
The extension office?
Extension.
It is our building, yes, sir. And we just, this year, completed a, we put a new roofing system on because we had some substantial leaking there. We had some testing performed inside or are going to be doing, performing some renovating. Our team internally has gone through and replaced a lot of plumbing fixtures, all the plumbing stops in the entire facility. We could, they were just at that point where we could have a catastrophic failure. So we're bringing it along little by little. I did put into the budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, some, some upgrades to that building, so we could go in and do some things to keep it looking sharp and, and serving, serving the citizens.
If we can, I, I'd like to see a report on that whenever we can get one, because I walked it not too long ago and, and I see where y'all sawed at some things, but I do see some of those offices are, are in pretty bad shape and it's a fairly used building from what I understand. So if you could let me know, that'd be great. Thanks.
Any questions?
I'm, hasn't, haven't heard anything about the water situation in Otis for a while. Where, what's the status on that?
So we have a call log and I, I would be more glad to share that with you. We've reached out to a substantial number of vendors and we've finally received some responses. So we've received two responses out of thirty-plus phone calls and follow-ups and emails. Currently, we have, we reached out, we have a price to, to drill the well and perform what we need, but we've reached out to the water master and we're awaiting his directions, so we know what our water rights are and some of the processes that he needs completed. He has yet to, to return our call, but we, we actively reaching out to him. So I made another phone call to him yesterday. I understand he's real busy and, but they said he would get back to us.
Are we keeping the trees alive at least with something?
So we're, we are currently, we've been making tons of repairs to the irrigation system. It's, it's not in good shape and we planned on using Otis water until we can get these things done to try to keep trees alive instead, so we don't lose as many. For every tree that we did take down out there last year, we did replant a tree, so.
Something positive must be going on, because I haven't had any phone calls.
Me either. And, and I've talked to Trent several times about it and he's done a great job of kind of alleviating that pressure by doing the things that he's talked about, taking care of the, the grounds and stuff. And Cass, is there any way that you could help us on that water?
Oh, sure I can.
Okay.
I mean, it's very important that we get this thing.
It is.
Strained out. And not only, not only for the facility, but, but we need to protect our rights.
You bet. That school's a big deal to a lot of people.
It is.
Ernie knows that as well as I do.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have any additional questions?
And we appreciate everything you do, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eligité officials and department heads.
So Chevron wanted to make a presentation today. It just came in yesterday, so I was. Do we have a minute to do that?
Sure.
Has the bill check.
I, I saw him button an envelope in his pocket. I was wondering.
I forgot to bring this last year, so I'm not going to look at the date on this. But just on behalf of Chevron, I appreciate y'all considering chair and commissioners, considering the fire safety trailer. I just want to say when my kid, the small trailer they used to have at Natus Fire Safety Camp, my kids went every year. They loved it. It was just tiny and one of the things you forgot to mention was the smoke part. So they still remember this today, like, you know, when they would fill up that little trailer with smoke and they have to crawl in the bottom and things like that. And this is, this new trailer is just more and above. And like the fire extinguisher he was mentioning, like it, like it's di- it's digital, so it can show you, like if you're shooting it too low or too high, so you can actually learn those things. And I've never put one out yet, so, you know, that's a possibility. So I'm kind of anxious to learn, like how would I actually do or would I make more of a flyer? Or that kind of thing. So, and I think we're going to look at trying to help support also the summer camps this summer. I think, you know, community emergency response is, is huge. And so anyways, we just are glad to, y'all saved that money from last year and then we're doing the other sixty-five thousand this year, because we think it's a great investment for the community. So we appreciate that, so. Hopefully we'll get to show it off. We're, we've been talking about maybe the state fair or something when they go for Eddie County. And Chevron is the main sponsor of the state fair for another two years. So anyways, we're, we're proud of this partnership and so proud of the Eddie County Fire Response helps us out in the field, responding to any issues that us and any other industry have. So we're really thankful for y'all supporting the fire department.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
You put it in the office and the roll check.
Why don't you?
Okay, eligité officials and department heads.
I guess I'll take my turn. Good morning. That's interesting that Chevron is the main sponsor of the state fair. I wonder how Santa Fe feels about that when they're beating up on oil and gas all the time.
That is an interesting point.
I, I do, we've had some good news. Went to Artesia and spent some time with a, a two-time Super Bowl winner and M V P Kurt Warner. I was, I, I got the pleasure of being his personal security for the event and that was very well attended. There was a lot of people there to see Kurt speaking. He, very nice guy, very nice humble man. And so that, that was interesting. We, amazingly enough, we anticipate being fully staffed at the sheriff's office, probably within the next, knock on wood, month or so. We've got three in the academy right now. I went and went for the parent teacher conference is what we call it, the midterm, where we get to see how they're doing and we get to have lunch with them and, and check on them. One of our cadets at, at that point was number one in the class. They took another test and it's neck and neck between him and another cadet. But he, we, we hope he's gonna, no matter how he does, it's going to be great. All three of them are doing wonderful. And we've got one more, we've got one to go to the next academy. We anticipate having a couple more. We have a couple of very good candidates and we have hired some more certifies. So believe it or not, we're actually turning certified law enforcement officers away because of certain issues that, that we see. So we're still being very selective and we just got our last one of the thirteen Tahos that were on order. They're coming in. We'll get another thirteen on order after the, the budget is passed and so our folks will be outfitted properly. Bobby Sullivan and I will be traveling this afternoon to Las Cruces. We have the Haida budget meetings. I'm, I'm currently chairing the budget subcommittee, so we're going to have some, some opportunities to, to do a little more for Eddie County potentially. Additionally, the drug task force is just knocking it out of the park. They are just doing unbelievable work. And anytime y'all see them, you should, you should commend them. They're, 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 they're doing wonderful work with way too few resources. And that's something I, I would ask for y'all to kind of put on the radar, is we purchased the, the new property for them. We really need to hopefully move head, move ahead on that and get some renovations done so we can get them out of that place that they, that, that substandard facilities that they've been in. With the advent of being almost fully staffed, we're going to start looking at our special programs again, the ones that we had to suspend while we were down a little lower. Traffic is becoming a big issue. Our, our cat team is going to become much more active and we're going to assign another deputy to the cat so we can have some good traffic enforcement. I'm understanding that there haven't been a whole lot of more complaints, anybody beating up commissioner over your area. I told them to continue to, they rotate. I mean, they can't be all places at once, but they're rotating. Additionally, speaking of the task force, I'm, I'm probably going to send another, another body out there to the task force. And they need it. They need it. So since we are going to be fully staffed, or close enough to fully staffed and we have all of our shifts are all covered, full shift, I think that's what we're going to start looking at. Chief Hutchinson and I have been discussing that. We've got, we've got the resources for it now. We may need to come with a, a reclassification at some point, because we can assign somebody out there temporarily, but they're considered detectives, so if, if there's a commensurate pay increase that goes with that. So we'll just be, we'll be looking at that and bring it forward to you. So appreciate all your support. The budget is going to be a big deal for us. We're able to get some things that we truly need and we'll be moving forward with that. So unless there's any questions for me.
I have one, Sheriff.
Yes, ma'am.
Last year when we had attended the, the school board, or was it the school meeting where you were present and Dr. Washburn was there, you talked about, you know, maybe having some officers like upload reports at police stations and things like that. Where do you guys add on, on making that happen?
It, we had a meeting the other day. Two of the school board members asked for me and Chief Hutchinson and a couple of other of my staff to go and meet with the superintendent. And we discussed some, some things, some, some challenges that we're having and we're hoping we can make some headway on that. But no, that hadn't really moved forward a whole lot. But I still do, my, my, with, with the, the rule change that, that y'all approved allowing, and again, I don't, I usually want my deputies out in the county. However, school safety is paramount. And with the change that y'all made where they can drop their kids off at school in their units, they are taking, they, they took that to heart and you, you will see a deputy, a marked deputy's vehicle around the schools a, a lot of the time. So that's, that's our biggest, that's our biggest push and our, our biggest contribution that, that we feel like we're making to the schools. They're doing the same thing in, in Loving School. I don't think, we, we've got maybe a couple of deputies who have kids in Loving Schools, Carlsbad Schools and Artesia Schools. So that's how we make our presence now. I know in Artesia, we have full access to the schools. Not all the deputies, but the ones that live up there have full access to the schools. State police has full access to Artesia Schools. They do, go and do walk-throughs all the time. We're working on get, moving forward with Carlsbad Schools to have that same type of access.
Is that something that we could help with? You know, anything that the board could do to help push that along?
I think that, that the, the school board is, is on top of it and they're really, Trent Cornum has been spearheading a lot of that. And Robbie Chacon, those are the two that we met with. And so I know that, that, that Clancy McMillan is also very interested in that. And I think there's a, there's a, some, a couple of other new ones. So anyway, we're pushing forward with it and I, I would, if, if, if you, if you see him, you can mention it, but I would hate to push on him too hard and make him feel like we're, we're trying to strong him. But thank you.
If I could, I've, I've got a quick question. Obviously, politics in Washington are, are kind of disgusting at the moment. Both sides, I'm, I'm not pointing anyone out at the moment, but especially lately with the border. Now everybody, oh, it's their fault, it's their fault, which I really don't care. It's a problem and nobody seems to be addressing it. Is there a way, and we were talking about our drug task force and everything else. Is there a way to continue? I've said it for quite a while now. Our state doesn't seem to be talking about it at all. Texas is pretty heavy on it. Arizona's heavy on it. Our state elected officials, I don't see a lot happening. But I know those numbers are staggering that y'all are capturing. Is there a way for us to put that message out harder as, as commissioners, as a county, as a whatever? And how can we gather other information throughout the state? Folks need to know what's coming across there. It's, it's, it's not even about the immigration issue anymore. It's the drugs, it's the human trafficking, it's the, everything else that's coming across that border that's drastically affecting our state on so many different levels. I understand we're not a border county and I get that, but it's impacting us.
We really are.
We're close enough that we might as well be. And so what I really like to understand is, is let's cut to the politics and how do we, how do we solve this problem? Here's the real numbers. And if we had real, real data that we could push out there and say, here's what we're dealing with in New Mexico. Because again, I don't see it on, and I'm, I really am not trying to call people out. I promise you I'm not. But it seems to be a silence anywhere higher than, than county levels at this point. So all the way up in our state. So somebody's going to have to take that ball and run with it and, and, and I, I think we would be willing to do that because it is detrimental to the citizens whom we represent and whom we have sworn to protect. Just a question. Hey, I would like to know those numbers, because I know last time you sent them to me, it was probably a couple of months ago. I can only imagine what, what they are now. I'd like to, I mean, obviously our jails, I'd love to hear from y'all as well. Somebody's got to start taking this message. We take the message of oil and gas and I think we're doing better at that. I think we can always do better and I think we'll agree with that. But this is a message that is direct safety, which we've sworn to do. And, and I think we have stepped up time and time again, whether it's new firefighters, new sheriff, whatever it is, to keep our community safe. People need to know those numbers.
Right. And, yes, sir, thank you for that. There's a presentation that's in the works that's, that the drug task force is going to come and, and make. I think Commissioner Bowen has been a catalyst behind getting that done. And it's something that I would like to see. We, we kind of, it's, it's gone kind of by the wayside, uh, you know, with, with Bobby and with Commander Layos. But we're gonna, I'm gonna have them come in here and give a presentation. Also, uh, like I said, be at, I'm gonna be at the HIDA budget subcommittee and executive committee meetings in the next couple of days. And I'm gonna have, and, and I may actually just, if, if y'all would like, I, I can have, uh, Will Glassby, our, uh, state executive director come in and give a presentation to. He's a, he's retired, he's one of the biggest dogs that DEA's at. I mean, he, he was, he, he was what they call a super SAC, uh, special agent charge in Houston. And which was one of the biggest, he had three different, different DEA agencies under, or DEA, uh, divisions under him. He's very experienced, very big wealth of knowledge. We're, we're lucky to have him, he's a good friend of mine. So if y'all would like to hear from him, I, I, I can talk to Will and have him come down and, uh, I'll take him to lunch and then he can give a presentation at some point. Mr. Chair, if you'd just let me know.
I, I'd really be interested to hear like what our fentanyl seizure numbers are, where we're at.
Okay, um, we'll, we'll have that presentation for you. I'll, I'll give you this. And some of it I can't really get into because it's a little bit of sensitive information. But with the, the checkpoint being closed and it, it wasn't shut down like it was last time, this is because it's being repaired. There's a lot of emphasis put on alternative checks being done. And we participated in that and it was very interesting when I talked to, we, we're not seeing, we weren't really seeing a whole bunch of the human trafficking part here in Eddie County. Because we're a pass through really, we don't have people staying here and doing, they're, they're moving through. So we really didn't have a real grip on the human trafficking department. We got, we got an eye open on, with these operations because they said about every other vehicle that they stopped had some component of human trafficking in it. And it was a big operation that went on out here, uh, stopping vehicles, talking to people, checking on things, all perfectly constitutional and, and within, you know, not violating anybody's rights. However, it was really nuts how many people, I mean, they were opening up trunks, people in trunks. It just, it, it, it was crazy. And the, my folks were like, we had no idea that there was that much of that going on. And so additionally, a ton of fentanyl has been taken off, a bunch. Um, and I, I would love to tell you about some of it. I can't at the moment, unfortunately, we've got some ongoing stuff. But I can tell you that they are taking off a lot of dope. And again, they need more resources, so. And they need a better, they need better facilities. I hate to keep bringing that up. I, I, we appreciate the purchase of the real estate, we just need to do something with it so that those folks have a good place to operate out of. But, um, yeah, it's, and it, it's, it, it's impacting, it seems like it's impacting, uh, South Eddie County more right now because of the border checkpoint and because of the closer proximity. But you've also got Northern Eddie County that, that has that conduit right straight through Roswell up to Albuquerque. And that, that's where a lot of the problems come in, in Artesia, in Northern Eddie County is, you know, e- each one has, e- each part of the county has its own access to, to violence and, and drugs. And so that's what we're looking at. We spend a lot of time over there.
Do you think in that presentation, if you would help highlight, help us highlight, because the one time I did talk to, to our new, Artesia's new Congresswoman, her thing was, and, and what we're putting more, more emphasis on checkpoints, meaning across the border checkpoint. And, and I'm by no means an expert and so this statement is not an expert's statement. But I would assume, I would go through the checkpoint if I knew that's where the emphasis was gonna be, I'd probably walk ten miles down where there was nobody. That's where I would bring mine across. But that's just me, or maybe that's the businessman in me, I don't know. But, um, it feels like there would be some, some other opportunities that maybe we should highlight, uh, on, on how do we talk about it? How do we talk about it properly? And, and really where should, is there even something you can do? Maybe, maybe I live in a dream world, if there is something we can do to stop it. But I really, in that discussion when he comes, if, if, I would love to have an expert like that to help us truly understand as a board. Here's, here's ideas, here's how we could help, here's what y'all should talk about, here's how we should talk about it and here's what's really happening. Kind of like you said, was eye opening with human trafficking. We hear about it, but if you don't see it, and when you start seeing it, I'm, I'm just tired of people, we see it on the news all the time, oh, fifteen people dead in a truck because they were locked in there and left. And that's wrong. It's wrong on every level and nobody seems to be stopping it. And it really is upsetting that not only that, but how many of our kids are dying because of this fentanyl? And it doesn't seem to be a, a big deal to a lot of folks, not big enough to stop it. A- and, and so I would really, in that discussion, if he would help us with that, uh, to me, that would be a great benefit. And I would hope we could take that to our citizens to help them understand what we're looking for. I have no idea what I'm looking for, I have no idea what I'm supposed to do.
Well, and, and Will prepared, well, he, he and his people prepare a, a yearly report. And it's not classified, it's not law enforcement sensitive, it's, it's, it's just a yearly report that comes out with all the numbers for New Mexico HIDA. And it includes, uh, national numbers as well. And I'll be having dinner with Will tonight and I'll, I'll discuss this with him and, uh, I'll, I'll get it figured out. He, he, he's extremely responsive and, uh, he understands that we have a, a very specific issue going on over here.
We have a big problem.
We do, we have a huge problem. And I, I don't like to get dramatic about it, but it is, it's, it's a, it's a plague we, we, that we're dealing with and it's only getting worse.
I know.
So we're, you, you've got some, you've got the best of the best working on it. I mean, our folks, like I said, are amazing. That's why I'm gonna add someone to them, uh, to help them, they really plan to eat about ten more, but that, you know, that's just logistics don't work out that way. But, uh, yeah, and they know that y'all support them too, they, they get that, they get that.
Well, I'm not trying to keep this going along, but you know, I have patients right now that are, you know, we went from like using twenty fentanyl pills a day, forty fentanyl pills a day, over a hundred fentanyl pills a day. First of all, I'm like, how do you do that? Where do you get it? And I mean, how do you survive that? So I mean, it's just, it's six months to go from forty to a hundred, you know, it's pretty.
It's plentiful, it's plentiful. Uh, they're just, they're pumping it across that border to us. The, the, the Chinese are providing them with, with the, the, the stuff to make it with and the cartels are just, they're, they're just pumping it across the border. And they know they can. And they know that, I mean, Americans are the worst. We, we love our drugs, we love our drugs. And they know that, that there's always gonna be a market. That's why people say, well, how come they, they're not concerned about killing their clients? Because there's more clients gonna, gonna step up right after the ones die. It, it doesn't matter to them. All that matters to them is the money and the flow of the drugs. So.
And I'd like to add one thing to all of that, it's been beaten around the bush. The reason we're having this problem is because the federal government via the Border Patrol is not doing their job. We have basically an open border. There's no support for the Border Patrol, uh, and New Mexico is not doing anything to help pick up the slack. So Texas is trying to pick up the slack, Arizona is, so it's all coming through New Mexico, so.
Yes, sir.
Feel like that needed to be said.
Well, you got the Mexican president sitting down there saying that there's no problem, that we're the problem.
We got an American president saying there's no problem.
I, I don't know what, I, I just, you know, it astounds me. So, uh, who, who is that president controlled by, the, the Mexican? I don't know who he's controlled by, but somebody's telling him, he's not, what he's saying is not the truth, so.
When is the, the, what method of transportation is the most unusual method that they're using to bring that trucks across? Is it trucks?
Cars and trucks.
Cars and trucks.
Yeah, just the, the, the highway.
You know, I, I, I like what you said earlier about the fact that, that we were having an operation going on. It's kind of like, kind of visioned it as being like a DWI checkpoint. And, you know, maybe we need more of those.
Well, the, the, the rough part is, you know, those, those counties on the Texas side, th- they, they don't have, they, they don't have a ton of deputies. I mean, they just don't. So we've got, uh, you know, DPS gets involved in it and we end up taking a, a big, a bulk of it. I mean, I, we, we, we have a shorter area, obviously, once they get across that border for our guys to take a look at them. But, uh, yeah, they've got other things to do though, besides highway interdiction. They've, they've got a lot of other things to do.
I, and I, and I kind of agree with Commissioner Henry, if I, if I'm running that operation, I'm just having it kind of out north of wherever the station's at.
Oh, yeah, Sheriff Danals in Cochise County, Arizona. It, that's, that's Sierra Vista, that place is nuts. It, we, um, we talk to him all the time at our sheriff summits and all that stuff. We're about, we're supposed to go down, I'm supposed to go down to, uh, shoot, Texas. I can't think of that. We're having another sheriff's coalition go down there. We're trying to work on this, that's one thing that is going on, that's a good, good thing. Uh, but Sheriff Danals, he shows pictures of, okay, well, here's the wall, here's the wall, here's the wall, and then it stops. And here come these people and he's got a video of them just walking around, they just walk right around it and they look, they call nine one one as soon as they get across the border. And it, it's, it's that bad. So at night, what are they doing? You know, those are folks that are seeking asylum, whatever they're doing, they're, they're wanting to come to the United States for, for probably good reasons. The people that are wanting to come for bad reasons, they just wait till it's nighttime and go around that. It's, it's crazy, it's crazy. Sheriff Danals is, is, is fighting an uphill battle, upstream battle, it's, it's unbelievable over there. So that's where it's at.
We appreciate you reporting.
Yes, sir. I know, some of it, I, I gave the good stuff in the beginning.
We have a lot of questions.
No, I'm, I'm more than happy to answer, call anytime.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Let's, Lady Bupsey, do we have any legislators in here? I don't see anybody. Okay, moving on, travel consent agenda. And we have none, it looks like. Okay, emergency business, I don't see emergency business. Legislators and elected officials, do we have any elected official comments? Okay, and we don't have a county manager right now. So we're the commissioners, commentators, announcements. Commissioner Cordova.
Just wanna thank the citizens of Eddie County for coming out and voting on the school bond. We're very glad to see that that passed. Uh, we certified the results last week. And after talking with Dr. Washburn, this is something that's gonna be desperately needed for our children and our community. And it seems like the land that's, uh, been purchased is gonna be a good area for this to happen. So just, I wanna express my thanks, uh, for everybody voting. There should have been more, what was it, two thousand, three thousand?
Thirty, thirty one hundred, thirty two.
Total, so we'll take it, but we could do better. Um, and aside from that, just appreciate the work on behalf of the county, everybody, um, the job that you're doing. And, um, that's really all I have today.
Commissioner Henry.
I'll make mine quick, um, as the sheriff pointed out, Artesia was lucky enough to have Kurt Warner. Uh, we had a fantastic weekend in Artesia. Anyone that didn't get a chance to come down, uh, it was busy, car show, all kinds of stuff going on. And, and I know Carlsbad does the same thing. It's kind of nice when, when the two towns have so many activities for so many people to do. Keeps them busy, keeps, keeps, keeps folks in, in the towns, in the communities rather than having to, yeah, I guess, Mac or I've had lots of, lots of stuff going on up here as well. So always glad to see that, really glad when, when, when those events happen and when they happen with no incidents. Um, and that's a thanks to, to, to all our law enforcement officers, uh, making sure that, that they're safe. Um, and folks are just there having a good time. So always glad to see that, uh, super exciting. I want to clarify in my comment earlier, that wasn't a direct at our current Congresswoman, that's a typical discussion. Anyone you talk to in, in Washington, that is their answer of, well, we'll just put more at the checkpoint. So that's not just her saying that, I didn't want to make it seem like I was trying to point anyone out individually, that was just a conversation I had. So, uh, to be fair to her, that seems to be a running dialogue from Washington. So I wanted to make that clarification, so that's it.
Christian Bowen.
Well, I'm kind of following off of Sarah. Thank you, everybody that voted in the school bond election last week. The results were, I think, in the best interest of the community. Thank you to Beverly and Chevron for the continued support for Eddie County, Eddie County Fire and Rescue, the, the sixty five thousand dollar donation, that's much appreciated. And the information, Sheriff Cage, thank you. That is good stuff that we can take to the citizens here. I think that's a big concern to a lot of people and it's a valid concern, um, something that needs to be addressed. And since nobody else statewide seems to be doing anything about it, or on the federal level seems to be doing anything about it. It kind of makes us the first line of defense for ourselves. So the, the hard work that the task force is doing, the sheriff's department is doing to continue to keep this community safe is appreciated. And I do hope that we can get some more information on, on that going forward so we can better address concerns and maybe, uh, Eddie County leads New Mexico in so many aspects, so why, why not add one more to our list of things we do better than anybody else? That's all I got.
Commissioner Beard.
I'd like to thank Chevron as well. They've sure been a good partner for Eddie County and they support us a lot. And I'm pleasantly surprised to hear they're a big sponsor at the state fair. I think that's going to be a good opportunity to maybe do the Arrowhead study in conjunction. Somebody ought to have a booth up that, we ought to be promoting that in conjunction with, uh, Chevron. And I don't know how that works, but, uh, I, I think that would be a good thing to do. And I thank Mark Cage and what's going on, you know, and I'm gonna back up a little bit. He's having to do the job of the feds. The feds are not doing their job, that is an open border and we have, and it is purely political. And before I get in trouble, I'm gonna quit right there, so.
I, I wanna kind of echo what Commissioner Beard just said about, you know, Eddie County's damn lucky to have law enforcement agency that the sheriff runs. And the people, the dedicated people that's within that, that care enough about our county to do the job that they do. We want to thank y'all every time we get a chance, uh, to do that. Another thing that you mentioned was the Arrowhead study. One of the things that, that came up whenever we were in Santa Fe this past time was, uh, I had a chance to visit with some of the senators and one of the things the senators asked me, you know, or they asked me was, uh, this is a great study and really eye opening, but what do you want from that? You know, where do we go with that? And so I said, well, you know, one of the things that we, that we wanna bring to highlight is, yeah, those are oil and gas funds that are state funds, but the cost to produce those funds are coming right out of the county of Eddie's pockets. And so we want to state to participate in the additional cost, uh, that was brought on by the oil and gas boom and to produce those revenues. And so my question to myself was, how much was that? So I had, uh, Roberta got some information, uh, for me. And so, uh, what I found was the average annual increase in governmental costs, whether that's, uh, safety, law enforcement, just government services, all those things was fifty five million dollars, an increase of fifty five million dollars annually. So that's what we want to help from the state is to help cover that additional fifty five million dollars that's coming out of the pockets of Eddie County to produce that revenue that the whole state of New Mexico is getting a benefit from. And I don't think that's too much to ask. Thank you. So if we have any further comments? Okay, then we're gonna go into executive session. The board may go into executive session in accordance with the Mexico Open Meetings Act, section ten dash fifteen dash one dash H, parent two, close parent, which authorizes the board of county commissioners to go into executive session to discuss limited personnel matters, uh, contract personnel, do I have a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll move the motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Call for the board.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, so what do we need? Forty minutes? Let's do thirty. Let's do thirty because we can't begin.
Thirty and make them suffer out there.
We're gonna do thirty minutes. So, it's ten after ten.
We'll apologize ahead of time.